I'd like to call this meeting into order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCoslin, may please take role.
Mrs. Feis.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mrs. Janasek.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Present.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
All nine members present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a presentation by Mr. Valani and Mr. Minch. Are they dialing in?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Dialing in.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me in. Unfortunately, Mr. Minch could not be in attendance tonight, and it's to no fault or effort on his own. He is away on a cruise ship. He actually purchased internet but could not get it to support here. So just as an early introduction, we're going to be talking about the Bethel Park School District Secondary Support Model that we're looking to introduce and continue to grow on over the next couple of years as outlined in some of our supports in our strategic plan. Because Mr. Minch could not join us, he was able to do some voice-overs for some of the slides he wanted to introduce and his role and position in the district. So Mr. Minch is going to have a couple of voice-over slides, and then I'm going to come back and take over and kind of add some more to it. So this is a little introduction to MTSS framework.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having Mr. Valani and I here this evening to speak to you tonight about the Bethel Park Teams Room at the high school. We wanted to start this evening by giving a little overview about MTSS. For many of you, you may be familiar with MTSS primarily because you've seen it in our strategic plan as something that we want to implement in the district. There are elements of MTSS frameworks in our district already. However, they're not necessarily all cohesive and all bound together by certain practices that are research-based for effective MTSS frameworks. There are three pillars to an effective MTSS framework. The first of those pillars is the academic. The second is the behavioral component, and the third is the social and emotional well-being component. These three tiers or these three pillars have within it three tiers of support. If you look at the diagram, you can see in the green, the tier one, primary prevention area, is where the majority of your students are serviced. This is where, for academics as an example, you do a lot of your work on your core curriculum to make sure that it's accessible to students. That's why we have as a part of our new curriculum framework, UDL, as a universal design for learning for students to be able to access the curriculum and to be able to demonstrate their knowledge and understanding. And that would be an example of a tier one academic piece for all students. Tier two would be something, a secondary intervention that would be trying to prevent long-term harm. And academically, that might be something like a short-term tutoring program or something along the lines of what we do with our reading intervention specialists at the elementary and on up through the middle school. Or maybe that intervention is not long-term. That intervention is maybe a small group for a shorter duration of time than a school year. And then, of course, we have tier three, which is the most intensive support, which is really for only about 5% of your students. In this area, this is where you're really targeting very small groups of students or even one-on-one settings with students in the academic, behavioral, and the social and emotional component. Something that we have to have in these, in the use of MTSS frameworks, is universal data points and screeners. I already talked about the strong unified core curriculum. We've talked about the tiered supports that are ready to be deployed based in the data, but also we have to have a method of measuring progress such as the use of data teams. That's something that we haven't done here in Bethel for quite some time. So those are elements of a really strong MTSS framework. So if you take nothing away from this slide is that there's three pillars that are academic, behavioral, social, and emotional, and that there are three tiers of intervention where you have tier one, all students, tier two, 15% are a subgroup of students, and tier three, usually 5% of your students that are getting that highest tier of one-to-one or very small group programming based in those three pillars of academic, behavioral, and social, emotional health. So with that, we're going to go into a little explanation of the elementary piece and how that feeds into the dilemma that we have at the high school. Okay, now when we look at the MTSS program, there's challenges that we have at the secondary level, and we're illustrating the elementary level here for a second to try to show you some of the struggles that we have at the high school level based on just how things are scheduled. In an elementary MTSS program, let's remember that the student is with one teacher for a very large portion of the day. Let's also look at these three pillars and how they're able to gather data and also able to be a little more flexible in how they meet students' needs at the elementary level. As an example, in the academic pillar, there's a lot of universal screeners such as the DIBELS testing or the MAP testing, which shows individual weaknesses or where students maybe are falling behind the pace. We already know we're going to be developing that strong curriculum, but remember, that elementary teacher is primarily that sole deliverer of the curriculum. So there's a lot of control for the teacher and what's happening in the classroom day to day. We also know at the elementary, we have that flexible scheduling where there's not a bell schedule where periods are running, and we have push-in and pull-out folks that can go into classrooms or pull out of classrooms for periods of time. It doesn't have to be 42 minutes. It can be 20 minutes. It can be 30 minutes. It can be whatever is designed between the teacher and the intervention specialist. So you have a lot of flexibility in implementing MTSS in the elementary level based on the scheduling itself. When you look at the behavioral component, again, the classroom teacher is setting that tone as far as what the classroom expectations are and the behavioral expectations are. It's much more, it's much easier to implement a PBIS system, which is a positive behavioral intervention support system. Again, we have social workers that can push in or pull out, you know, for student needs based on their behavioral needs. We have the ability to teach a lot of explicit skill instruction to kids at that level, again, being self-contained with the same students, so when problems arise with those students, they can be managed. Also, social and emotional learning. Right now, we've got the third and fourth grade getting social and emotional instruction as a part of tier one strategies. That's for all kids based on our social workers. They're going in and doing that right now. We also will be implementing some universal screening for risk factors for social and emotional health as well as a part of our policy that we're going to be passing on trauma-informed, the trauma-informed policy. We also have tiered supports for social groups and such with the social work services and the site-based therapy program. So these are elements of a really strong, the capability to have a really strong elementary MTSS program with the primary understanding that one of the reasons it works well at the elementary is the ability to be flexible with groups of students based on the schedule of the day and the fact that they're with one teacher, and it's a very controlled environment to implement an MTSS framework. And with that, let's then parallel that to what the struggles are at the high school. Okay, so you just heard about the elementary framework and how that's a little easier to access due to having less people involved with them, also the fact that they have more time in the day that they can be flexible with. At the high school, where we are, is that we struggle with some of these concepts because we have 40-minute class periods. We've got students visiting seven to nine teachers or maybe even more when we look at the adults that they come in contact with in the day at the cafeteria as an example. There's really not an easy way to deliver tiers of support to students. When you take them out of class, you take them out of class, and that's a very difficult thing to overcome for some students, particularly those that need more ongoing maintenance. Might be your tier two or tier three type students in need of maybe social, emotional health types of activities. The other thing that where we are as a high school that is something we're really trying to work at is the discipline is really heavy on the punitive action, and we don't have a really solid method right now for reformative, restorative types of practices or PBIS types of practices where we are really reinforcing good behavior throughout the school with common sets of school rules. Again, that classroom teacher at the elementary has the ability to set those rules for those same 20, 22 kids every day. We just don't have that as easily at the high school. So that's where we are right now. We need to improve that area, we know. We also know that our personnel are being pulled in many different directions, and this person, this Teams Room and this Teams Room Coordinator is really meant to coordinate the needs of these students that are more at these tier two, tier three types of situations in need of intervention at that level. They are there to help coordinate and communicate with those individuals, those seven to nine people that that student comes into contact with. So that's where we are as a high school, and that's why we struggle implementing an MTSS framework because of the nature of how the high school is scheduled. And with that, Mr. Valani is going to go into some further discussion about where we'd like to go with the Teams Room.
Thank you, Mr. Minch. Just to piggyback on this slide before we go to the next slide, Mr. Minch very well articulated, obviously, the district goals for an MTSS plan in addition to kind of highlighting some of the challenges at high school. I think one of the unique things, the Teams concept, which we're going to share tonight, has kind of been in being built over the last year or two in identifying some of the supports. Obviously, we had many issues pre-COVID and pre-pandemic, but even so, we've had more ongoing and needed supports moving forward in the high school. One thing Mr. Minch shared, which I thought was very valuable, was coherent support. There's a number of individual supports. When you look at neighboring districts, just like our own, there's a certain amount of school counselors, administration to service and do different things for students. Some neighboring districts have upwards of six to seven counselors. We have four at the high school. Some of them have two to three to four principals. We're fortunate to have four in our situation. As we go through this presentation, really trying to share a unique opportunity here to really evolve our program, to support students in a way that is unique to many other, unique in our district, I would say. By creating a Teams Room and some of the supports in there as we go through the next slides, it's really going to show an opportunity to service many problems or issues or different students of all levels. Mr. Minch shared the tier two and tier three interventions, but the Teams Room would be a service that's available to all 1,315 students currently at Bethel Park High School. In this next slide, thank you. So what is Teams? What is the concept there? It's a very long word and why we use Teams, but it'll be known as the therapeutic emotional avoidance, oh, last slide, previous slide, therapeutic emotional avoidance monitoring and support room. Again, very easier to say Teams. Many schools have incorporated a concept called the chill room through the Allegheny Health Network. Some have ongoing emotional support programs, interventions. This is a place to support students with depression and anxiety that struggle to make it through a full day. So this room and the hope and intentions of this room is to really support all students. As Mr. Minch had said, and when we get to the next slide, I'll elaborate more, you know, we have a certain amount of supported students. We have four school counselors at the high school level. 230 of those students in our high school that have individualized education plans are supported by an individual counselor. With the remaining three counselors, that's about 350 to 360 kids supported by an individual counselor, and obviously, they're there to support our students, and they do a tremendous job, but with the sheer volume and number of students and just the increased amount of challenges that students have faced and the different variables coming off this pandemic and just in general and today, there's more students and more need than people to service this. And really kind of defining a space that is intended for this. Mr. Minch shared, you know, those three components of academic, emotional, and social in the MTSS plan. We provide a ton of academic supports at the high school. I think that's relevant in our schools, and we continue to increase, and we keep setting up these things. We do have individual and isolated supports through school counselors, administration. We have increased. We have social workers. Right now, we have one and a half social workers at the high school, and it is great, and kids are accessing services. But again, there's still things that are being missed, and I think that's evident, you know, through safe-to-say reporting, through students and output. Students need to know where to go. Sometimes they don't know to go where to go until they're in trouble, and that's another point there. A lot of the things and consequences of behavior are sometimes rooted in the issue that needs to be resolved. So while we can provide discipline and try to uphold students in the student code of conduct, taking a student to a magistrate or putting them out of school is not, is not the best option at times anymore because, again, the avoidance of school is the issue, and the root of that problem is really what we need to service. So having a designated space that is focused exclusively on supports for any student, and again, what these services can be is as simple as a de-escalation room. Sometimes a student just has a bad day. They might not want to make an appointment or miss a whole class. They might just need to step out and take a breather and know that they have a place, that there's somebody there that will meet them there, say, hey, take a seat, catch your breath, let's look at this. You know, as we start looking at data and measuring things, we eventually, as we evolve in here at the elementary and high school level, is there an assessment grabber or data grabber to see how students are doing on that specific day? If it's ongoing, continued support, are we monitoring when these things are happening? What's triggering these things? How do we de-escalate for students that need the support? Again, the next part is that liaison. So we have these social workers that are providing these great interventions for students. You know, in the last four years that we've had there, we have upwards of 100 students accessing social workers either weekly or bi-weekly. We also have our school-based therapists for students that need additional support. But if it's weekly and bi-weekly, and then they're seeing students, when that student comes in in crisis, usually they're met with administration, counselors, and usually we have to fill them in conference rooms in the high school main office where meetings are trying to happen and different things are trying to happen. And again, the space is not created for that. We're just dropping kids in any office we have open to kind of give them that breather. This Teams Room will be that core space where students can know with no judgment, no perception, as opposed to just going there to kind of have this, access this person, access this sports and these programs. Again, if you go to the next slide, I kind of want to show you this gap that we really think it will fill. So when you look at the MTSS colors, you kind of see the general education model here. So what's available to every student every day at Bethel Park High School? You have admin intervention. You have school counselors, social workers, a SAP referral. Obviously, they communicate, teacher feedback, parent concerns. That's all part of a normal, okay, what's going on? How do we identify students that are having challenges or issues? Now academically, if you move down there, you can see, you know, academic hub, writing center, tutoring resources, those are available for the academic components. And then we have a thing to identify issues. Well, how do we treat issues? And that's where we're going to go next. So SAP evaluation might identify a student that's missing school, doing poorly, has a rough situation, something's going on at home, lost a job, the parents are going through issues, anything that fits into that thing. After we identify them, where do they go? Who supports that student? SAIP is our Student Attendance Improvement Plan. With our truancy laws, we identify, we send letters home, and we had outside supports. We used to have a support, we used to call, focus on attendance. They don't even take referrals anymore because they don't have the staff to meet the needs of that. So again, we send letters, we hold students accountable, and eventually, they might end up in front of a magistrate, but at that point, is it too late? Have we already missed an opportunity, again, to address the issue in order to reform that behavior? Again, it's not always about a punitive consequence, but what's the, how do we reform the behavior and change the behavior? Support the student to get to where they need to be, and where they need to be is in school as much as they can and as often as they can, and we need someone to support that. Again, there's restrictions, school discipline, magistrate. If they get a medical diagnosis, what do all those things lead to? An evaluation possibly for what we call either our gifted services in Chapter 16, special education services in Chapter 14, or 504 under Chapter 15. We've seen an increase in Chapter 15 504 service agreements for, in my opinion, for no other reason except parents don't know what to do. They don't know how to help or support their students. So these service agreements, when students are diagnosed with anxiety or depression, they receive a number of supports in the classroom to help them access their learning. Again, what about the functional behavior? Now, students who qualify will get an IEP. They get an IEP case manager, and they're entitled to all of the provisions under IDEA. If a student qualifies for 504s, they also have a certain amount of protections and a certain amount of rights under Chapter 15. What happens to the students that don't qualify for either of these or can't get services under these agreements? Who supports them? Where do they go? Again, they fall into that lump of school counselor, 360 kids, administrator, there's... Sorry, just getting a little feedback. They fall back into that, and they have no place to go. So right there in that middle piece there, and you can look at this, and you look at least restrictive environment, obviously, the red in the bottom right is, you know, outside placement, alternative schooling. That is the most restrictive placement possible, and that's with no other help. Before our kids go to outside school therapy, or I can go to outside therapy, or go to hospitalization or partial program, which we have many students that have to obviously take advantage of those opportunities, how do we support them? Who receives them when we try to transition them back to school? Or do we just throw them back in there? So when you look at a Teams Room, even though it's yellow and outlined in red, it actually should have some green in there as well because it's all of those things. It's an intermittent support for all students. It's more than what the general education can offer, but it's available to all. You do not have to qualify for the support or additional services. What are some of the things that this room and/or a person in this room can do? Check-in, check-out, review of grades, check-in, make sure students are completing work, social, emotional data, support, therapeutic space, de-escalation, social groups, avoidance for students that, you know, come to the building. You're having a hard time, you're anxious in the morning, come to the building, start doing your work, let's get you into class. SAP supports. Once we identify that a student qualifies for the student assistance program, it's the follow-up order. Now, that's not a challenge that's exclusive to Bethel Park. That's one that all SAP providers is the follow-up services. Who's checking in with that student if it's just a social worker bi-weekly about those other five to 10 days when they're also in school or they need support or help? Also, there's a big communication piece. While outside supports and social workers, our epic social workers have been amazing, they don't have full access to the academic support with teachers. So again, this Teams Room person or coordinator, which I'm going to share in the next slide, to me is that last missing piece, I think, at the high school to really have a true MTSS model and really put us forward in a progressive thing, given us more than what any other district has in the area. This person, this room, I would hope would link counselors, teachers, administration, and parents, and students, so we could all be on the same page in providing those intermittent supports instead of having students escape or hide in bathrooms or try to avoid or try to leave the building or not come to school at all because of the issues they're facing. So to make this happen, again, there's many grants and programs for chill rooms, which are just chill rooms. There's things that are out there that are just social workers and supports and things, but to make anything our own, I think it has to be within our own capacity. So I would love to create what's called a Teams Intervention Coordinator. And what is this role? This person's role is to monitor, align, and manage student supports interventions and tracking the therapeutic emotional avoidance monitoring support room, Teams Room. Work with the administration to create whole meetings for student attendance improvement plans, and again, follow through and support the students with those intervention plans through the Teams Room. Facilitate the student assistance program and support the SDIs in Chapter 15 504s. Not so much the academic component. We do that through regular education classrooms. If we have to do a pull-out room or testing, we have that through the writing center already. But this is the behavioral part. We used to do crisis passes for students that were in crisis, and then what would they do? They'd report to the office, and then they'd sit in one of our many conference rooms, and then when we have meetings, we have students sitting in crisis or in rooms that we have to then shuffle around or sit in different areas with different supports, where this is a one-stop shop for all those, any SDI supports for anybody. We have gifted students that have SDIs with mental health as well that need support too. Where do they go? The Teams Room. Anyone, even with a special education, we have a study skills room, and it was on that chart, study skills is an academic support. Where does a student go? If those students are doing academic supports, are they comfortable going there, or do they need the emotional intervention support of the Teams Room? Again, connect access with student services, maintain open lines of communications with everyone. That's that coherent piece that's really, I think, needed to really make it fully functionable at the high school. That's between students, families, administrations, counselors, social workers, and outside supports. What would be necessary? There would be this one position of a Teams Intervention Coordinator. That person would be between the Teams Room and the main office, and then to help that person in providing interventions, we currently have one and a half social workers. Mr. Minch, I know, has been working over the last year to budget and hopefully have proposed two full-time social workers. So instead of one and a half, it would be two full-time social workers. So at least one to two people are always in that Teams Room between the social workers and the Teams person, and the Teams person would only not be in there when they're facilitating meetings or collaborating and connecting services for students with some of those other things with the SAP and the SAIP. Again, they're going to be linked to the administration, to the counselors, to the teachers, and again, when you go back to that, if you go back to that chart, they're that missing piece that's just there. Again, we have the general, and we have the tier three supports where we send kids out. We have some tier two higher supports in there, but again, where's that tier, that high tier one, low tier two for everyone? That's what the Teams Room is, and that's what we're hoping to bring and make a reality at Bethel Park High School with continued conversation and your support.
So one of the questions I had, Mr. McGregor, is this similar to what you're involved with at Mount Lebanon? And it sounds a little bit, but I'm not the expert.
No, we're in pairs.
Okay.
So like our emotional support team is me and another teacher. So when kids have academic or behavioral concerns, they come to one of us. We don't have a room like this.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Valani. Is the type of person that you kind of picture for this role almost like a combination of someone like a social worker that would be good with that direct intervention and then kind of also almost an administrative type of role that would, you know, oversee the, I guess, actualization of the program? Is that kind of what? I mean, that was my takeaway, I guess, from your presentation. Is that what you see?
It has to be, has to be the right person. I would say it doesn't have to necessarily be an administrative person. I would look for this person to be under the teacher CBA. It could be somebody with an emotional support, special education background. It could be somebody that has had quasi-administration support. We have that, you assign deans of students that also are connected with teachers. I think having somebody that's linked to academics while having a quasi-administrative role, but it would be someone in a teaching, a CBA position. But again, it's finding that right person that connects with students, is empathetic, and again, has a knowledgeable sense to be able to, again, it's not the punitive discipline side, it's that supportive measures, okay, hey, come see me, where sometimes an administrator's viewed as a disciplined person. A counselor is that college, I don't want to impact my academics grades person. This is that in-between space for that. Again, it's finding that right person.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
That is a really good question, really good question, and I guess, you know, Mr. Valani, how do we, how do we make sure that the right person is in that job and it doesn't become a position that we put somebody in who's not good at any other job? Okay? I mean, that's one extreme, okay? How do we make sure? Because once you're in, you know, the CBA, all of a sudden, this position is open as long as you're qualified and you get transferred in. long as you're qualified, you get transferred in, and if this is viewed as, you know, I don't know, easy job, or, you know, there's all kinds of different motivations, but you need somebody who's really good with students, who can, who might be, you know, animated, who can kind of help them, you know, feel good, you know? This is a unique position, and I don't, I mean, who, who, who's the kind of person who can fill this job? I mean, I think we kind of need a job description, right?
Well, besides me, besides me, no. I, you know, Mr. Christensen, you're 100% correct. I think this is a veteran teacher, I think this is somebody, obviously, you know, with internal transfer system in Bethel Park High School, if somebody inside the district put in, we have the ability as the administration to say yes or no to that transfer, but somebody who's maybe had coaching, somebody who's been a leader in their department, again, somebody who's been a part of the SAP team, or has had SAP training before, those are some of the qualifications and prerequisites. Special education degree is helpful, or multiple certifications. I think, again, not that we're looking for the perfect unicorn here, but I think you have people like that who have been aware, have been on committees, have been on programs, initiatives, and I think that's somebody, and that's some criteria that you kind of put out there with a job description. I did submit a requisition with some look-fours for the district to review, but I would definitely open that up, and I think you don't hire the person until it's the right person. It's the same thing with gifted. I think, you know, gifted, you don't need a set certification, but again, you're looking for that teacher that has those qualities and intangibles that, you know, demonstrate a need to kind of extend and go beyond what the normal requirements may be or look-for's.
Mr. Valani, how will you measure progress, I guess, with this? I don't know what data would you look at year to year to know that this, this team's intervention is working year to year? I don't, I don't know if there are specific things that you'll be looking at? Could you share that with us?
Absolutely. So as Mr. Minch had shared, one thing we don't have is that functional data. So if somebody comes in, how do you assess where they are on a daily basis? We have explored, and we've met with some different providers and different opportunities. We've looked at that, it's itself data. A lot of times with these school attendance improvement plans, or any of the SDIs, a lot of things have goals set, so I would imagine in the team's room, when we do get a student that's maybe a tier-two, more frequent provider with interventions there, we would measure, have some kind of measurable goals, very similar to those set up in an IEP, or a school improvement, or this behavioral improvement plan. And again, what is that? It's different for each student, but it's a measurable goal to improve the identified issue that's being caused. So if a student's avoiding classes, or not turning in work, or doing things, we can measure and set goals or progress like that, we can update that and do that. Essentially, this team's room person becomes a case manager for those students that don't qualify under typical services, under IDEA, or any of the other Chapter 14, 15, or 16s.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? It's Buffy.
Yeah.
So I understand MTE, I'm a special ed teacher, and I get what you're saying, but how, where do you draw the line? Like, if a student doesn't qualify for an IEP or a 504, and, but they're in that, I guess in that bracket where they're getting a Teams Intervention Coordinator, how do you determine who gets that and who doesn't? Do, am I, like, it seems to me like everybody would need it at one point or another. Am I not looking at this the right way?
I wouldn't say you're looking at it in the wrong way. Again, who is that person? Who's that identified person? It could be the SAP referral. You know, we put in, when I got here, four years ago, almost five now, we had 63 SAP referrals. The next year, we had 86. We had 125, and we're about 150-something this year. So there's 150 more kids there. Again, is there crossover with our 230 that have IEPs, our other 150 that have 504s? Absolutely. But that's where that support is there. Again, are we measuring goals, and are we held to the same thing with quarterly progress updates? Like a special ed teacher, I'd say no. But again, if the student is being successful in accessing supports, and checking in with our social workers that are already in the building, and again, have that place as opposed to just sitting in conference rooms, or sitting in a chair in the main office, I think that environment is there. Again, it's no different than these places that have spent upwards of $100,000 to put chill rooms in there, and to me, a chill room is just a place to go sit. This is not just a place to sit, this is to access a social worker, this is, you know, it's come in, service, and get back into the day type of room. And again, so it has components of that, it does have some components and crossovers. I was an emotional support teacher and a special education teacher, I was also a gifted coordinator prior to becoming and going into administration. So, you know, I rely heavily on my special ed background all the time, and again, if every kid had some of those supports that are not offered, you know, that's it. Now, we did talk about an academic hub. We were looking at our library to be more of an academic support, you know, retesting, things like that. I'm not looking at the team's room to be a place where kids make up tests. It's, again, it's that social behavioral, it's that I need support, I'm in crisis, where do I go, where do I de-escalate? This is a room to do that. And again, it's really already populated with the social worker, it's really just adding that coordination piece, which right now is being done with counselors, administrators, and everyone else. It's that one person to tie some services together. Again, the frequency and volume is exceeding the personnel that we have. Again, now we're just linking that additional personnel, as opposed to having seven, eight counselors like some schools have, or that, we're linking that person in a space with some social workers we already have in a central location, is our idea.
Right, I just, I mean, if we were going to do this, I would, I would pretty much, oh, I can't think of the word. I would definitely want someone with a mental health or a special ed background, because, I mean, that's just me, so, all right.
It could be counseling too, yeah.
Nope, 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 I disagree, sorry.
Mr. Valani, how many people, I mean, who is monitoring the 504s right now for the high school?
Administration, with school counselors assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Valani. I think this is a wonderful idea, and you and I have spoken before about a lack of somewhere for students to go at the high school, that is not an office, that is not bothering administration, a contact person for a quick check-in, for some help, for someone to talk to. This is wonderful. I think we really need this very, very much. It really, it fills that need, and provides, if we can get the right person, who's really good with, with students that age, and is seen as someone who is supportive and reassuring and open to helping kids. I think it's, it's wonderful. I appreciate you putting this all together for us to look at. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a good idea also. I've said for a long time, maybe not in meetings like this, but I'm concerned that students in the middle are the ones losing out, because, you know, on, you know, those that have access to IEPs and 504s were more mandated to provide support, and it's the kids in the middle who, who often lose out, because a lot of, you know, investments and spending go, you know, to others. So I think it's a good idea. I think that the person that we hire is key, okay? It can't be anybody, it's got to be somebody really special. And I guess, the question I had, just in terms of procedure, what are the approvals that we need to provide? Is this just opening a position? Is that the only approval that we need to provide? Or is there something else in terms of approval that the board needs to provide?
Yeah, at this point, that would be the first step, is opening the position. We'd obviously have to follow the CBA, but following that, if there was more we needed in terms of approvals, we would be back to CU.
And, and is this, this is not a net new, this is a change of position really, for a position, I think we had a librarian retire from the high school, is that how we kind of look this in terms of a net cost?
No, this is, this is currently in the budget as a new position.
As a new position, okay.
My additional question to that is, going on the new positions, the social worker that Mr. Minch and, I'm going to believe Dr. Shu was looking into adding also, that was included in the new numbers in the budget to get to eight?
Social workers were four, they're now eight. Those are outsourced positions, though.
Correct.
Yeah.
But that was, we're going up in numbers again?
Going up in social worker numbers? Yes.
So we would go up a half a time, but we're not going to, we're not going to pull that from another school that would need it also.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think this is a very great ideal, Mr. Valani, especially concerned when you were speaking of the last five years, your referrals for your SAP referrals. So, and this would be an in-house position, it'll be our, our staff member as versus the outsourcing. Nothing against that, but, you know, the tendency, it can't happen at times that we lose some outsourcing staff based on their host company, but this is ours in-house, we can groom, get them adapted, and they can make this position for many years to come. So great, great proposal, and hopefully you'll hear a good response from this board.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Mr. Valani. You and I have had many talks over almost the last five years, as Mr. Christensen said about that middle person, but also, my hope is that we're going to catch some kids before there's issues, and if they're just having a bad day, there's somebody to talk to, and we're not sitting them in the office waiting on a counselor, or waiting on a social worker. It's an immediate thing, and you can catch a lot of things before that, so thank you for it. Lot of hard work, I know, with you and Mr. Minch went into this, so thank you.
I also want to thank you, Mr. Valani. I think it's fantastic, when I worked in the building in guidance, I saw firsthand those issues, where we had one social worker and kids lined up to sit and just talk, and so a place for them just to check in, just to get support, I think is, is huge, and I also think it could be replicated in the future at IMS and Neil Armstrong. So I think this is a great start for something that could go district-wide very easily, and it's a great framework, and I'd just say, great, great work.
Yeah, I want to second that. I think that's a really great idea, Ms. Hoppy. If this, you know, ends up being successful, I would also support seeing it in other buildings.
Okay, any other comments on this topic? Great, thank you, Ms. Valani.
Thank you all for your time and consideration, I appreciate it.
Next on our agenda, public comments on any agenda items. Any call-ins? No?
No call-ins.
None from the audience? The massive audience? Okay. Just checking. Okay, let's move into the different committee reports. So first on the agenda, Mr. Scalzo for Curriculum Committee. You want to walk us through those items?
Yes. Under Curriculum Committee, we have seven items. Number one, independent study in art. Number two, independent studies in ceramics. Three, independent study in music production. Four, independent study in music production. Five, independent study in world language. Number six, independent study in world language, and number seven, professional development. I request to move these to the consent agenda.
So just one question for clarification in here, so with these independent studies, they're not causing, you know, additional extra duty pay periods or anything like that? It's all...
Correct.
And I have a question. For, for these two world languages, curriculum is coming from...
[laughing]
I mean, are we, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the student and the teacher...
I mean, did the student go out and look for it? Did they?
Yeah.
I guess that's what I'm going for.
Yeah, that we don't have, the world language programs, obviously, we don't have these languages in our course catalog.
Right, we used to have Russian years ago, but that was...
Yeah, so these two on the agenda tonight are actually getting approval to, to modify an existing curriculum from, say, an online source or one of those type places. I'm not sure specifically where they're looking, but that would give them the approval to award Bethel Park credit for a course that isn't ours.
Okay, and then our facilitator would just monitor their progress?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, did I take your...
She's taking a guess as you're talking, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know...
Okay, good. Any objections to putting all seven of those items on the consent agenda? No? Okay. Personnel Committee, Mr. McGregor.
Okay, under Personnel, there are 11 items, I'll read them. One, approval of extra-duty responsibility program. Two, acceptance of resignations. Number three, appointment of personnel. Number four, change of assignment. Number five, approval of administration tuition reimbursement. Number six, approval of professional tuition reimbursement. Number seven, approval of the agreement for confidential employees. Number eight, approval of the agreement for salaried maintenance head custodial employees. Number nine, approval of the agreement for professionals and support management employees. Number 10, approval of extended school year staffing. And 11, MOU with the Federation teachers. Any discussion? Be no discussion, I move...
Well, just, I'm sorry, too quick. Just the expansion on number 11, the EASs, some of the Republican...
Yeah, those, those positions, the Federation is giving the district permission to have grant-funded staff, that would be one-year appointments. At the end of the year, we would, those positions wouldn't exist. So we're using ESRS money, which is federal stimulus money that was awarded to the district, we're using those dollars to fund some class-size reduction positions at the elementary.
All right, and again, this is, we were able to do this last year, and we're able to do it this year.
Correct, and we appreciate the cooperation, support of the Federation, and to be able to make these class-size reductions.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If no, then I move one through 11 to the consent agenda.
Any objections to that? Okay, good. Mr. Grossbeck, Finance.
All right, we have 23 items under the Finance Committee agenda for tonight. Number one, June 2022 salaries and bills. Two, May 2022 financial report. Three, budgetary transfers. Four, acceptance of the Pennsylvania Department of Education's Bureau of Special Education Performance Grant. Five, purchase of Rifton Tranlets. Six, contract with four consulting services. Seven, acceptance of donation. Eight, PSBA membership dues renewal. Nine, 2022, 2023 general fund budget resolution. 10, post-June 30, 2022 budget transfers. 11, approval of depositories. 12, Homestead and Farmstead exclusion resolution. 13, lease agreement with Two Extreme Moms LLC DBA, Lois Johnson Learning and Childcare Center. 14, approval of student services contracts. 15, waterfront learning services agreement, AIU. 16, ediscier education services agreement. 17, items declared unused and unnecessary. 18, payment for services at the bus garage. 19, payment for Independence Middle School Phase II renovations. 20, payment for Independence Middle School Phase I renovations. 21, approval of the 2022, 2023 insurance renewal rates. 22, contract for district telephone system. And 23, partnership agreement with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit for pre-K counts. Does anybody have any questions about any of those 23 items?
Yeah, I'd like number nine held out, not to put on the consent agenda, just in case there's any additional changes.
And I think, Mr. McCoslin, were you going to walk us through your updates?
I can.
To the general fund budget?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like number nine held out, not to put on the consent agenda, just in case there's any additional changes.
And I think, Mr. McCoslin, are you gonna walk us through your updates to the general fund budget?
Sure. Okay, this is just, I'm gonna go through this quickly, as some of it's repeating from May, but there have been some changes to the budget since May, so I'm gonna try to highlight those for you, and then answer any questions. If you have questions through, through the presentation, please stop and ask. Right now, this is where the budget stands. We are $322,911 out of balance. It does represent a 5% increase in spending. If you factor out the ESRS, we're closer to 3.8. This was the evolution of the budget. In February, we were almost $4 million out of balance. In May, I presented the proposed final budget, which was a little over $1 million. And now, on June 21st, we're about $322,000 out of balance. What's changed since May? These are the lists of things that have been changed since May. There were some changes in revenues that increased that deficit. Actually, the deficit went up as high as 1.5 million, so we've been doing a lot of work over the last several weeks. We've added the phone system replacement that you see on the agenda tonight. We've increased, we had to increase some charter and other tuition costs based on student enrollments. We have the added teams coordinator that you heard about tonight, and a librarian position that was not previously in there. So we had, we had to add the benefits for that because they changed because of the staffing changes. We added some wages for paraeducator, a paraeducator that was hired in April, some postage cost changes, and some other minor wage adjustments. What decreased? We had some software reductions for repetitive duplicated software that was in the budget that were found when we went back through it. There's some new, there were some new textbook purchases in the budget, but they're not really ready due to the new curriculum cycle and new process to purchase those books, so we were eliminating those. It's probably gonna be another year before they're purchased. We moved the restroom concession stand construction to the capital reserve plan instead of the general fund budget. We eliminated the capital reserve. We eliminated positions based on retirements, the librarian aide, the painter, and four paraeducators. We eliminated some, the intern positions that were in the budget. We moved the admin from the, it should say, from the PPO to the EPO, it's backwards there, saving the district a little under $50,000. Because of the phone switchover, we can reduce, we can eliminate the Cisco support, so the net on the phone change is really a positive for us. We'll save 19.5 on that expense. And then there were some changes due to some duplication or changes in staff that netted the final amounts. Questions about that? Your tax assessment is no different than it was in May. It's still sitting at a 4% PDE index, which is a .9009 mil increase. It will increase your milage to 23.4281, and then we did have some slight tax assessment increases. Those haven't changed since your May agenda. Median household income still stands at 153.8, and the tax increase on that home would be $139 based on that milage rate.
Is the index rate fixed, or is that still kind of up in the air until the state budget is approved?
The index rate is set every year in September and given to us, and then there's an adjustment based on your, your aid ratio. So, the standard index was about 3.5, ours is slightly higher because of our aid ratio. Some districts are higher than four.
But to his point, Doug, what assumptions did you make on state revenue without a state budget?
The state revenue, they were, they were projecting like 13%. We have, we have less than that in the budget right now because they haven't really approved the final state budget. I don't think it's gonna come in quite that high, but there's still an increase built into this budget.
So, when we, when we look at kind of our current year performance, I'd noticed in, in those numbers that we were looking at before, that our state revenue is about, was it about, you know, a couple hundred thousand, or maybe it's even more, lower than what we had forecasted it at? Where do those variations, where do those variances come from normally?
A lot of them can come from your social security reimbursement or your retirement reimbursement, because you base those projections on your staff and your salaries that you're going to pay, but obviously, those change throughout the year because people retire, resign, you hire new people, so those numbers can fluctuate somewhat.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Mr. McCoslin, one more question. I know, based on our milage increase, we're not gonna have any issues with the ruling out of Montgomery, or, yeah, Montgomery County, I believe, with Laura Marion and their lawsuit last week with the, them owing the taxpayers $27 million for their milage increases.
I don't know that I'm 100% familiar with that lawsuit.
So, I'm not closely familiar with it, but from what I'm aware, the factual circumstances were very, very distinct. They were a very, very strange set of facts, not mirroring what I know to be your budget processes in Bethel Park School District. But we should certainly, yeah, continue to review that, the decision, and keeping that in mind for managing finances in the future. I'll send you info about it, Doug.
Thank you. Here's the history of your milage rate. Again, we keep referring back to, you went four years without a met tax increase, then you had a tax decrease. This will be the first year that you'll be back to your, above your 2015-2016 rate.
Yeah, it's only 2.4% over 2015, so it's not a bad, a bad one.
Just, and this is a little hard to see, but the bar is kind of illustrated. If you compare your milage rate to your neighbors, Mount Lebanon and Upper St. Clair, you're still lower than they are. This is pretty similar to what you saw before. It's no big surprise, most of your revenue comes from local sources, followed by state sources, minor amount from federal, and then refinancing sources make up the final sliver. Again, expenditures, nothing new here. Personnel costs make up 74% of your budget, so $73 million in your budget are personnel costs, followed by debt, tuition, and then IU services, supplies, and utilities. When you look at spending per student compared to your neighbors, Mount Lebanon, St. Peters, and Upper St. Clair, the bar on the left shows you the dollar spend, but the chart on the right, which is a little more interesting, shows you the percentage of that spend and where it's spent. So you can see that while the other school districts are spending more than Bethel Park, Bethel Park is spending the largest percentage of its budget on personnel costs, which is the blue bar. It is the highest. So, that tells you that a couple things that we already know. Your staff is up there in years, you have a large percentage of your staff that is top of the scale with many years of service, and you also have a lot of additional staff that we're aware of because of your situation with five elementary schools. So, looking into the future, these are numbers that we hope that will improve down the road three years because of the, the situation you're in. Here are some of the staffing changes that are occurring in the budget. We do anticipate the following retirement resignations being replaced next year. There are six teachers. The current high school auditorium coordinator has resigned, and we're gonna change that around to be a high school audiovisual technical supervisor. I believe they were starting those interviews this week. We're aware that our director of buildings and grounds will be leaving us, so we'll be replacing that position. And then there's one custodial maintenance retirement as well that we'll be replacing. The district anticipates the following retirements, resignations not being replaced. There are seven faculty positions, one computer professional, five para-professional instructional assistant positions, and two custodial maintenance positions. And then we're gonna add a couple positions. Teams actually isn't on there, probably should have been. I think it got added at the last minute, and I already had the slide made. But there's a halftime kindergarten, halftime special education teacher that's in the budget. There's a possible another increase of a halftime kindergarten teacher who is currently halftime that might need to move to full-time based on where enrollments end up. And then there's an increase of two part-time admin secretaries moving to a full-time status. One is in the transportation department, and one is in the special education department.
And then, on the, on the list of additional, I think, just, you know, a couple line-ups ago, we talked about the CARES or ESRS funding, where we have some...
Yeah, those positions were in the budget in the prior year, so I didn't consider them being added. They're, they're just going to be there again next year.
Okay.
But they are in the budget.
Looking at number 12 on the finance agenda, it looks like there was a bit of an increase in the allocations for the Homestead and Farmstead exclusion. Did you account that in what the average taxpayer would be paying additional, or did you not include that part? I know it's separate budget from...
Yeah, it's factored in. There was a bigger allocation granted by the state this year. This is the first time they have, since the inception of that program, increased the allocation to the district. And I believe our number, well, every year, our number of Homesteads, Farmsteads changes, so that resolution has the number that the tax break will be for all the taxpayers with a Homestead exclusion on the tax bill. I can't remember what it is, up 200 and something?
212, yeah.
Sure. Thank you. I'm, I'm noticing that between the four paras in the school year we just completed that we are not replacing, there's an additional five paras we don't intend to replace next school year, and that sounds like nine paras. And I'm increasingly concerned.
It's five. One is, one is an instructional assistant, and I believe there's four para-professionals.
That was already added.
So it's four and four?
No, that's right. Five total.
This is the right number.
So, but a couple of pages ago, there was not replacing four paras was how we got the budget deficit down? Are these the same?
Right, that's the same thing.
These are the same ones?
Yeah, 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 same ones.
Okay. I thought you were talking about nine paras.
No, 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 same ones.
It was extremely concerning to me.
No, I just, I, that was the number, and then I put it on the staff.
For the record, I'm also concerned about four paras because we have a continual need for paras.
They, it wasn't done arbitrarily. We met with the special ed department when we made the decision.
Oh, okay.
We would never do that in isolation. You're welcome. The capital purchases in the budget, there is money in the budget to replace the playground equipment at Memorial Elementary, and then there's a substantial little, little under $600,000 capital lease to replace technology, continuing on with our theory of replacing technology on a cycle. This'll be, I guess, the third group of items we purchased. It includes grades one and two Chromebooks, grades four and five Chromebooks, replacing the high school coding and tech lab desktops, the administration laptops, as well as the laptops that the board is using right now. There will be some monitors that will be purchased to go along with that so that they can be docked and, and work at their desk with larger monitors. And then, the IMS tech lab, which happened to be Apple Max Minis, will also be replaced in that lease. This is where your fund balance is with this budget. You would have about 5% of your fund balance for undesigned purposes, which is just slightly under $5 million. A little over $1 million is non-spendable. That's tied up in inventories or prepaid amounts for insurance. You have 16 million in committed, almost 17 million in committed fund balance, and a little under $400,000 in assigned fund balance. This is the breakdown of those funds, committed. You have a little over $140,000 for legal trust settlements, for student settlements that were set aside. There's $300,000 set aside for severances that are paid out when teachers retire. There are also six, almost six and a half million set aside for benefits that are paid out for staff who are retired, and then a little over $10 million in the general fund for capital projects that you may have coming in the future. The assigned fund balance, there's $45,000 set aside for band, and the deficit right now that stands at $322,911 is set aside to be pulled from fund balance. There used to be money set aside for copiers. You had purchased them outright several years ago. However, would be the administration's recommendation that you don't do that in the future, that you do a leasing program, just like you do with your laptops and computer technology. There's no value in having these copiers at the end of their life cycle. So we are currently, along with the tech department and Mr. Slezak, are looking at proposals from different companies to update that equipment and do some rearranging and reduction of equipment and make it a little more efficient for the district. So, that'll be forthcoming in the fall, probably.
Can I, can I ask a question on this, real quick?
Sure.
And the band uniforms, the $45,000. Dr. Walsh, we had this conversation a couple of days ago. When do they plan on purchasing them again, and what is the normal cost for that? Because I would totally encourage the band directors to look at summer uniforms. We had, they had an incident at the Memorial Day Parade because it got so hot. We've got to get them out of the black wool. Even if we do black shorts and they're orange tops that they all wear underneath it, totally encourage that, but is that something we could use to supplement them for that also if it's...
Yeah, it's sitting there, whenever you want to use it. It's for the band, so...
I'm just asking...
I didn't, that was started before I showed up on the scene, so we've just continued to add to that assignment.
And I'm just asking what band uniforms normally cost, like, where...
I, I haven't done band uniforms in a long time. I have no idea what they cost. I, I would have to go to the band directors and see what, they would have a better sense.
Yeah, and I would encourage the administration, and if, you know, to, as somebody that was in the band here, and we had orange uniforms at the time, they weren't as hot as black wool, but they are hot, and these, we, we need to look at...
I noticed some other bands in the area use a summer uniform of khaki shorts and a white polo with the district logo on it.
They have orange shirts that are part of their uniform.
Oh, they already have that?
They already have those orange shirts, so that's why I'm saying black and/or white shorts that are purchased, that we know are summer weight.
Right, right.
You know, a lotted tennis shoes or band shoe situation would not be overheating of all. I'm, I'm talking, you know, Bethettes are up to here with collars and black wool sweaters. Majorettes are up to here with collars, again, also, and leotard uniforms that can get very hot in the middle, in an 80-degree day on Memorial Day Parade.
Mr. McCoslin, are the monitors part of the regular scheduled tour, or is that kind of a one-time, or, I guess, more a regular purchase item?
Yeah, they, they usually are one-time. This, the monitors are either for staff or for administration so that they can, right now, a lot of them are sitting there with a desktop and a laptop. We're planning to not replace those desktops or laptops, put new laptops on and be able to just plug into a monitor so that they can work with a larger screen during the day.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that those weren't on the regular update schedule as frequently, since obviously, monitors don't go out of...
Not typically.
...uses often. Okay, thank you.
All right, capital reserve, I'd like to give you an update on that as well. Right now, we're estimating your beginning fund balance for next year to be a little under $9 million in that reserve account. And then, we are planning for next year to pay for the paving and fence at the bus garage. Those bids came in a little over $1.7 million, and we still have the restroom concession stand project at the high school. Right now, there's about $400,000 slated for that. With those expenditures and some minor interest income, that would put your ending fund balance at about 6.8 million. Again, once we have the projects done, we, we continue to work on our facilities master plan. Since you're going to be updating the middle school, your high school's about 10 years old, and then you're gonna have a new facility. We don't anticipate a large number of capital projects in the next several years, but we will have to start to do some updates to the high school, you know, and also, there's the security concerns we've had lately that we're talking about some updates in some of the buildings, the high school as well, so. And then we also know that we're gonna have some paving that needs to be done in the future at the high school campus, so. Those will get... Those will get put on the facilities master plan and be part of this. And then as we need to replenish this reserve account, you do have, remember, that money sitting in the general fund that you can utilize for those projects as well, or you could choose to transfer it to this account in a future fiscal year. So, you have some options. Right now, this is the way your fund balance in the capital reserve is broken down. Little over $900,000 has been designated for turf replacement. There's still $700,000 in there for bus replacement. We are starting to look at options for electric buses. There's a new document that came out now for some grant money, so if it's an option, we will consider that moving into the future. Again, paving projects, and then, like I said, some security upgrades. There's some updates at the stadium that we're talking about, and some storage that needed in some of the buildings as well. So, those are how that fund balance is broken down. What's next? Any final adjustments will have to be made over the next week. We'll be adopting the final budget next Tuesday on June 28th, and then we have 10 days to submit the PD 2028 to the state, and tax statements get prepared, and then we have to file everything with DCED and Emma for your bond issues. Questions?
So, you'd outlined, there's about a $350,000 deficit yet, and I'd like to see that, a plan to close that, because it's, you know, as we saw this year, even when you take out the cares and all the additional expenses we had due to the grants, we're probably still going to see about a 3.5% to 3.8% increase in expenses. So, we're going to start out in a hole next year also, and we start our budget planning. So, I think it's good to close this gap. I think you were going to look at some, you were going to make some recommendations. So, I think for the meeting next week, if we could put a special presentation on, you know, before we get into the business items, if you could update on your recommendations and changes, and we have some discussion before actually getting into the voting. But as Ms. Turner suggested or requested, this should be a separate, should not be added to the consent agenda. Let's hold it out separately.
That's fine.
Is everybody okay with that?
Can we also hold out item number six for discussion?
On this agreement, this may be another action item for next week also, is, I think it's the same agreement that we had last year, and, you know, we've done a lot of good things through this agreement over the last couple of years with all of the stand programs and things like that. If we could identify some specific, and I think we've identified responsibilities of the building principals and how, you know, they need to engage here, so I think it's been good stuff there. This reads a little bit just like a retainer, like an ongoing retainer type of a contract. If we can specify specific projects that will happen over the course of the next 12 months, I think that would be good. That's my opinion. I don't know, is any other comments?
Well, if there's, you know, something specific, like my understanding is that the committee will meet twice a year. I'm unaware of things that will happen between that that we'll need consulting services for, so I'm, you know, asking the question, what does this entail as far as next year? What does that look like? And could we convert to maybe a per-session rate as opposed to an annual rate to kind of move those resources to some of these other areas, like the teams coordinator, we're needing $15,000 to cover that? So, just had some questions such as that.
Okay.
Just a question for number five. The purchase of the Riften tram lifts. Maybe our staff can enlighten, is this something new for us, or do we have any of these on property now? And I see we're looking at just two, and the logic behind two versus all the buildings?
It's to assist in lifting some of our students who are currently in wheelchairs, and some of these students are getting too large to do independent lifts. It was by the recommendation of our physical therapist. It can be used with other students, and it's the two opposed to having additional is based on the student's age and current size.
So, right now, there's only need for two?
Correct.
Okay.
So, it's for use in the building, or to help students get into buses, or where are they mostly used? Are they on stairs, or are they...
It's for use in the buildings.
Okay.
I believe it's to help them lift in and out of the chair, can be used for restroom or up and down the stairs.
Okay.
Is there any thought of having a third case, one of the two breaks down, then we're not waiting?
Given the price that was not discussed to have a backup one, because I'm sure we can physically lift, it just would take two people. It takes a little bit more manpower if that situation would occur. I do know with the individual wheelchairs, if it breaks down, given the nature of the needs, generally speaking, someone comes very readily to fix those issues.
And the access funds, so, I'm saying, at 82, so they're basically 4,100 apiece?
Correct.
All right. And so, designated to particular children for particular schools?
Correct.
And they will move with them as they move through the system?
Yes.
And, okay, I still think possibly a third one, and again, if another need comes up and we have a student, obviously, you'll be back with us for that request.
And I do know that the price is quite pricey, but our physical therapist has gone above and beyond to work different contracts to try to cut deals, to say, if we buy two, what if we buy three, what would be the cost?
But versus a staff member getting hurt?
Correct.
And then that could be a lot more expensive than $4,100.
Absolutely.
You know, so I'm just saying, that way, you know, I'm glad to see the purchase is there, and I'm just saying, maybe a third one, just in case something goes wrong with...
I think that we were trying to also extend. We have several students in the district that are currently in wheelchairs, and as these students get older, we will be buying more.
That was my next question, Sarah. I don't know where these are going, but I know there are several students in one building. And, you know, I didn't know if they were going to a particular building or they're going throughout the district.
These two are going to secondary buildings. I believe... Yeah. And again, as those students that are in the elementary buildings get older, it's something we will look at purchasing additional lifts.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about any of the other items? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to move items one through 23 to the consent agenda, except holding out items number six and nine.
On the policy committee, so we're having one, third, and final reading for next week, I guess. Ms. Turner, do you want to, do we need to discuss that, discuss if it goes on the consent agenda?
Yeah, the revision is to the electronic devices. Dr. Walsh, Ms. Zundell and I had worked on that. There were a couple of changes that were recommended by the solicitor, which were done. I would move it to the third reading, as there was no objections at the end of last month. And then there's two additional ones that are going up for first reading. Policy 127, the assessment system, and I did not see anything on there that was...
So, that's just a revision?
This is the one, right.
This speaks to what we talked about in the curriculum committee meeting several weeks ago, about increasing accountability on middle school students who don't achieve a proficient score on the PSSA would be assigned to an intervention class. And so, it's a one-line addition to the existing policy.
Okay.
And then the final one is, in addition, it is 128, and then it's a guest speaker policy, so that administration here and at the offices and the administrative assistants and those kinds of things are ready for them when they show up in the morning.
Yeah, this is not an existing policy. This is new.
Correct.
It's a new proposed policy, and based on all the feedback we got from some of the community members who had a problem with the guest speaker at the high school, we didn't have procedures for administration or policies, so this is a new policy we're recommending.
So, again, I only move number one to the consent agenda.
Okay, perfect. Under other, we have some student agreements, the health and safety plan, and the selection of voting delegates. Any reason why these items cannot be moved to the consent agenda?
Could we have item two held out, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, item two held out. On the selection of voting delegates, is there anything that we have to do before we vote on that? I am assuming that, yes...
Yeah, you need to fill in that blank.
PSBA, who's that? Anybody opposed to Sharon, since she's the rep for PSBA? Okay.
So, we can appoint up to three individuals. Is there a, I guess, I apologize for my ignorance, is there an incentive for us to do that?
I did it last year with Connie, because we just tag teamed it.
Yeah, so my understanding is, is that you don't have to be attending the conference to vote in their platforms and delegate assemblies, so no, there wouldn't be any disadvantage or a reason why you couldn't nominate more than one person.
And it's virtual. I mean, you could go to Mechanicsburg to vote. I don't know why you'd want to.
Scenic Mechanicsburg, yeah.
Everyone okay with Sharon?
I guess I'm the only one, then, okay.
It's all Sharen's.
All righty.
Fill her name in and put it on the consent agenda. Okay, that's it. Any other public comments? Any call-ins?
No call-ins.
Okay, any board comments? Except for the obvious, congratulations, baseball team, huh?
Yes.
Two in a row, back-to-back. I would like to say it would be nice to have them here next week, if possible, if they're open to it, I mean, if it doesn't interfere with their summer plans, but it'd be nice to recognize them. It's fantastic.
Tough fruit to block, you know, on over.
I'm sure they'd rather do other things on a Tuesday night than come to a school board meeting, but it'd be nice, you know?
Promise them, get them in and get them out.
Yeah. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.